Call the meeting to order. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. I invite you to join us.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Kolpak? Here. Pepcorn?
Here.
Strand? Turnberg? Here. Mahoney?
Here.
Tonight, we have video that highlights renovations of Fire Station Number Five. We could put that on.
So, we had some structural issues along with some needs of the Fire Department for gender-neutral facilities, for fitness facilities, to modernize the station, to add in some decontamination procedures with the hot-wire and cold zone concept. Because of the structural issue and because of the needs of the station, we removed the old living quarter side. We had to stay within the same footprint of the building, so we rebuilt the living quarter side and added a couple small things to the apparatus side, the garage where the fire engine is housed, that bring the station up to modern standards. But working with our project coordinators, we wanted as short a time as possible for a closed station, so we had a one-year project timeline. During that time, we moved 805 out of the station, and for a short time, we shuffled apparatus in different stations in Fargo. At the beginning of this year, West Fargo offered to house 805 because they're so close, so we moved 805 over, and they were able to operate and live out of the West Fargo Fire Station. So, the big things the firefighters will notice here is a combined living room and kitchen area. In the past, we just had one big bunk room with some beds in there, and a treadmill and some fitness equipment all stuffed together. There really wasn't enough room to house all of that equipment, so we created a separate fitness room where we can keep the fitness equipment, where they can work out, and then we have separate bedrooms in the back of the station, separate sleeping rooms for each firefighter, and a captain's office that also has a separate sleeping room attached to it. So, those are the big things they'll notice as they walk out to the apparatus floor, they go through the handwashing zones. We've been very lucky here in the city of Fargo. The stations that we've built historically have met the need at the time, and for the most part, with Station Five now being renovated, we only have a couple areas in our current existing stations that are in need of some updates and some remodels to make those stations functional like the rest of the stations. So, it is important as the city grows, not only to look for new areas where we can put new stations, but to make sure that we're keeping up our infrastructure and making sure that infrastructure is safe, that it provides for the firefighters that are working there, and that it's really optimal so we can provide the best service we can for the city of Fargo.
Good to have that done, and I heard West Fargo was happy to have the guys out there, and it was a good exchange, so it worked well. Is there a motion to approve the order of agenda adding an extra item to the regular agenda, approving the agreement of property demolition for Western Excavation LLC for property located at 1102 First Avenue South?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the September 29, 2025 Regular Meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items one through 40?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Strand?
Yes.
Kolpak?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Turnberg?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Public hearings. It's first public hearing is continued till 10:27:25. It's the EOLA second edition, and we will move this to 10:27. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Kolpak?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Turnberg?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
We're going to get a report today from Fargo-Moorhead Economic Development Corporation on Job Creation Incentive Projects. Ryan Asham and Joe Raiso to give us this report.
Good evening, everyone. Mayor, Commissioners, thanks for having Ryan and I present to you this evening. I'm really excited about the work that we've been doing with your staffs, especially Jim and Mike, for the last probably year and a half or more, on something that I think is really unique, not just to Fargo, but I don't see a lot of this happening anywhere in the country, and I'll explain that in a second. I think it's probably important, and I know many of you know this, but for those listening, when we think about economic development and the growth of any economy, pretty much there are four ways in which economy, a regional economy grows. The first is going to be transfer payments, the money that the city might receive from the state or national government. Second will typically be higher education, as we see our higher education institutions having more students who are then, you know, living here, paying tuition, and spending money in this economy versus another one. The third, and I think it's probably tied to your next item on your agenda, is tourism. You know, I've spent a lot of time with each of you related to the Convention Center and really appreciate that opportunity. It's really important to have that partnership with the CVB and organizations like ours. And then the fourth is these primary sector businesses, essentially the reason why the EDC has existed for 80 years going into next year, and that is to support the companies who essentially don't need to be here or grow here because they serve national and international markets. So, they're making decisions every day on where they are selling their goods, but also where they want to locate their businesses. And probably a couple of years ago, through the EDIC Committee, we talked about, and the Committee talked about, how can the city do a better job of being able to collect and report the partnerships that it has with these primary sector companies as they come before you for investment into their project here in Fargo. And so, we're really excited that we've spent that time on our staff, is Sammy Rowe. Sammy is our Senior VP of Business Intelligence. She's a sales force administrator. She worked closely with Jim and Mike and the team and many on the EDIC to collect the necessary information on the nearly two dozen contracts that the city currently has out with primary sector businesses, just to make sure that those companies are fulfilling their commitments to the community in terms of new property taxes, jobs, and overall wealth creation per citizen or per those individuals who are working for these companies. So, in your packet, we included our report along with a spreadsheet that lists each of those contracts and where they sit. Two things to note before I turn it over to Ryan, maybe to highlight a couple items, and then we'd open it up for questions, is obviously some of these contracts occurred and started and won't conclude for a couple, three years, so there's still about a half dozen that are still in operation. And also, several of those started pre-COVID. We know that there's been some changes, obviously, with the impacts of COVID, with automation, but also, if you look right now on our jobs board, there are several hundred jobs being posted by those companies that still have contracts out in partnership with the city. So, I just wanted to share a few of those pieces of information. Really happy to be working on this project with you, and we hope to replicate that with our surrounding communities, just to get even a more macro picture of the value and growth of primary sector companies and your partnership with them. So, I'll let Ryan highlight a few of these items.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Yeah, just, there's only a few items I might highlight. They're in the report, so you can see them there, but, you know, I think the one item and data set that's really interesting is when we looked at and surveyed and got responses from these 15 companies, the average wage reported that they were paying was $77,328, which is 35% higher than the wages committed to at the time that they completed their incentive agreement with the city. So, significant increase in the wages being offered by these companies to attract the talent that Joe just described. And across the totality of employees that those companies are employing, that equals about $28 million. When you look at that delta between the 77 million and the 57 million, that equates to 28.5 million in additional payroll over what was committed to at the time of those incentive agreements. So, that would be the item. If I had to kind of point one out that I thought was pretty compelling and interesting, that would be it, so.
And I'd add to Ryan's, because also in that report, and I know property tax is important consideration for revenue that the city has for your operations, whether it's a fire department or other basic needs, we saw the property tax valuations increase over 300% on that partnership that you've had with those companies over the last several years. And this is, these are the current contracts going back just a handful of years. We expect to do this going forward as companies come to you asking for partnerships to invest here in Fargo versus other locations that they may be looking. So, love any questions that you might have.
Joe, it's an excellent report. Where will the public be able to view the report, just on our agenda, or would they get it from you?
We can post it wherever you'd like it. We can put it on our website. I think, you know, obviously, on the city's site might be very important in the economic development area.
And will it be on our site with the elected agenda? Because it's a good jobs report. Yes, it would be. Thank you, Joe. Commissioner Pepcorn?
So, Mr. Chair, so the one thing, this will be on our cities, all this information that's in here, it's a lot, a lot to go through, and so for us to see it today, there's a lot for us to go back and look through, so I want to thank you. Can you talk a little bit? So, first of all, actually, these incentives actually reduce property taxes because there's so much money that's grown by this. Can you talk a little bit about that?
Well, I think one piece to this, and you know from our time presenting to the Commission when we have projects, is we do sometimes large economic impact analysis that looks at not just the direct impact on jobs and property taxes of those businesses, but also what then occurs in the community in other sales, whether it's in healthcare, in shopping, and maybe as important as anything is in homes. So, these are really conservative impacts because they're not including some of those other, what we call indirect or induced impacts to the community. And to your point, Commissioner Pepcorn, you know, this broad portfolio of assets that the city of Fargo has in terms of residential, industrial, and different types of commercial is exactly what a community wants to have so that you can withstand fluctuations in the economy. And by the way, if you look at the numbers today nationally, as there's a lot of uncertainty, this market still is doing pretty well. In fact, I'll give you one quick statistic. It was just reported two weeks ago that of the 387 metropolitan areas in the United States, the Fargo Metro ranks 11th in terms of diversity of economy. Hugely important, and if you look at these companies and the industries that they're in, that says a lot about continuing to support that diversity.
So, a couple more things, Mr. Chair. So, first of all, so Commissioner Strand was concerned about us tracking our incentives, and so this is our, we're just getting better at it. We still have a ways to go, and so if you looked, we had 20 of the 23, so not everybody participated, and so we tried to do it voluntarily this year. Was, I would say, we're trying to do it the nice way, but there are ways that we can make them if they don't want to participate, and in the future, we'll say, if you don't participate, then you're not going to receive the incentive. So, eventually, we can. But I also want to say, I want to thank you because what we ended up doing now, instead of having the, you guys do your own work and the city do their own work, so now we do it at one time, and so it's more efficient, and it's the same information. You're just sharing the information. So, I want to thank Ryan especially. He's worked a lot with Jim, and so thank you very much for what you've done because that's kind of what we tried to accomplish by using your information and how it applies with the city. Does that make sense, Ryan?
Yeah. No, it's been a great partnership, and would also recognize Michael Spinowski with the city as well, has been a great partner. And so, we've got technology tools. We invest a lot in these resources, and to be able to kind of coordinate and collaborate, and we're tracking the same things that the city's interested in tracking, so it seemed like a good fit.
And I just want to say, to blow our own horn a little bit, so that Cass County EDC, they work for everybody, but 70% of the projects are in Fargo. And so, that's the, we are the, we're the big kid on the block, and that's a good thing sometimes, so I just, and I want to thank you. I mean, we, I would consider we're good partners. You're at our meetings, and I think this is a good evidence of us working together, and that's, you can get a lot more done, so thank you for what you do.
Commissioner, for all those not from Fargo listening, those decisions are made by the companies to where the assets are. We're agnostic on that. We want it to locate somewhere in the metro.
Come on, Joe. Come on, Joe.
And Fargo just happens to be where.
You're at the City Commission meeting for Fargo.
Well, I know, but this gets listened to by others as well.
I know you're a politician, Joe, and I know you have to have everyone like you, but I'm just saying, in Fargo, we're very proud that 70% of it is here in Fargo, so sorry, Mr. Chair.
We have great industrial sites, Joe. Commissioner Kolpak?
Yeah, thank you for this data. Very much appreciate it. And to that point, I see on November 12, there's a breakfast meeting where you're going to be sharing more of your data, and I'm sorry if I'm putting you on the spot here, but can you, just at a high level, talk about some of the innovative waves you truly are working on attracting more workforce to this metro?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
A couple of things. One is, on November 12, we'll be sharing the results of a regional workforce survey that we're asking all organizations, so actually, the city should be filling this survey out, the school districts, private companies, from throughout the region. Last year, we did this and had about 25% of all employees employed in this region represented in that survey. We want to break that record because we really want to understand what is happening in the most important criteria for companies, and that's workforce. That's talent for any organization. So, the more we know based on this survey that we're delivering in partnership with FMHRA, there's about 15 partners who are delivering this as well. I know Shirley's here with the Convention Visitors Bureau, our Chamber, and others, so anybody listening gets access to that, please fill that out. In terms of what we're doing specifically, there's a laundry list of things that we've been doing for a couple of years with the resources you and others have provided. More important than anything is we know the growth of this regional economy is going to be led by our ability to attract people here. There just aren't enough humans in this market to fill the open jobs that we have, and that's been the case for quite some time. So, for those listening, you can use this site and share as a company or as a person with others, livinfargo.com. It's also liveinwestfargo and liveinmorehead and liveinfmarea, Commissioner Pepcorn, but I'll just say liveinfargo. And it will direct you to information about what it's like to live here, authentically what we all know, that a lot of people don't know. It also has a jobs board, so you can look up jobs by positions and make connections to companies. We've been marketing that site directly to targeted individuals around the country and markets. Right now, today, we have over 20,000 people we're communicating with who have told us they want to be communicated about our region. And there's a lot of other things, Commissioner Kolpak, that we're doing that be happy to talk to anybody about in more detail.
Mr. Strand, do you have your light on? Do you want to speak? Mr. Strand?
Yes, I do. For a long time, there's been discussion about look back, claw back in incentives, and I don't know if, is a 5% non-fulfillment rate in projected job creation an adequate, acceptable position for us to be in, or do we need to tighten it up? Because that's 110 jobs times $177,000 per job. It's pretty substantial. So, how do we tighten that up? And then we have three businesses that don't even participate in this survey.
Well, yeah, I would, you know, to Commissioner Pepcorn's earlier comments, we're starting this process. We're communicating with these companies. A number of these companies have made commitments and expect to fulfill those commitments, whether that's 5%, 3%, 10%. I think there are a lot of other factors that are important for a community to look at, overall property tax increase, wages per employee, the effects of automation. I think what we're trying to do here and what we heard from the city leadership who's been involved in this is, this allows us to have a meaningful conversation with this company. If you're meeting those requirements, great. How do we help you grow even more? If you're not, let's sit down and talk about what is the situation that's causing you at this point in time to not meet those requirements. So, I see it not as a gotcha. I see it as an opportunity to have a further conversation. And the last thing I'd say about this too is, you do have clawbacks, so you can act on those. But also, you know, in our view, a lot of this is a portfolio. We manage a $9.6 million loan fund on behalf of the city of Fargo, West Fargo, and Cass County. Have all of the 300 and some projects we funded over the last 30 years worked out? No, they haven't. But that loan fund has grown three times its original investment because of successes. So, I would also offer up for your consideration to think about this, yes, individually, but as much as a portfolio of what the city's partnerships with the business community are.
If I might continue, you know, the reason I vote for these is because of the jobs they create and the wages that they're set at. And if those jobs don't get delivered at the wages we expected, then that raises a question in my mind. What's the concern? Are we going the right direction? Is it improving or what? I'd say that's just where I'm at. That's why I vote for these incentives, is to get those jobs. So, if somebody comes to us and presents and asks for incentives and they don't deliver, there needs to be some sort of consequence. If they don't deliver what they said they would deliver that led to them getting it, and I'm in favor of incentives and not everybody is, but if they're not going to deliver what they said they would deliver, that has to be addressed.
And I think we're making that very transparent for you to have those conversations. You know, our job, we feel in this, in this particular initiative, is to have the technology and the relationships to be able to collect this information in a meaningful way that the city was not able to do prior, so that now you're informed to then have a discussion. You know, it's a contract with you. It's not a contract with the EDC, but because of our partnership investment and your investment in us, we feel this is something that we can do more efficiently and effectively.
Might ask one more question. I'm just curious about the lay of the land. With the cap imposed upon government subdivisions by the state, and it is what it is, there's some folks that are pulling back from their support of incentives. Are you getting any indication from other governments if they're on full completely, or are they more concerned? Where are we all landing with the counties and the schools and state?
Well, in a lot of cases, communities aren't having projects to even have that discussion. Fortunately for this region, we continue to see quite a bit of activity. We keep a very up-to-date list of projects we're working on. I think we're just about 35 right now that we're working on. I would suggest, like when I came here in 2018, our region wasn't marketing to attract companies because of the workforce issue. One of my comments to leadership at that time is, I think you always have to have your sign out, and you have to be talking about what's available here. So, having the tool in the tool chest is important. So, then when the opportunity comes up, you, working with us and others, can make an informed decision. And if you, you know, every year, we do an economic impact of all these projects, just like we just did here, so that you can make an informed decision. I wouldn't personally advise to turn off incentives or to double incentives. I think what you have right now and the conversations we're having is sufficient to hopefully continue to move the economy forward.
Any other questions or discussion? Thank you. Ryan and Joe?
Thank you.
Forty-three. Recommendation for Convention Center Committee to move four developers forward at second phase of Convention Center Site Selection Process. Jim Gilmore and retired Charlie Johnson.
Yeah, Charlie, as you know, Charlie's been leading this committee, and I just want to stress, you know, the City Commission appointed this committee, and the City Commission approved the RFP and the scoring, and so now what Charlie's bringing forward today is results that scoring using the, you know, system that you had approved. So, I'll just turn it over to him, and you can see up on the screen, this is how the committee ended up scoring the nine different proposals.
Yep. Thanks, Jim, and thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you for all for your participation in the Committee. I think we've made really good progress. I want to take this opportunity to thank everyone on the Committee, including Joe Raiso. Thank you for the kind words about the CVB, Joe, and the Chamber, and we have 14 members on the Committee, including all of you, so nine who are not City Commission members, and they've all been very diligent and worked hard at this, and I appreciate everything they and you have all done on this. So, as Jim said, we had presentations from all nine of the proposed locations, and after that, we engaged in scoring. Took a couple of weeks to score them, and what happened was that the top four came out to be Muchler Bartram, which is Bruhala area, Enclave, which is the Shields Arena site, RLE, which is the Fargo Dome site, and EAPC Architects and Engineers, which is the downtown site. Those are the four that rose to the top in the scoring of the Committee and also of our consultant, the same four, not necessarily in the same order, but the same four were in the top of those top scoring. So, the Committee a couple of weeks ago voted to advance these to the City Commission, and we would like your approval to move forward with those four. And our plan is to, we have a meeting this week where we're going to discuss what might be in the second round of the RFP. We have some things written down already and how we might score that. And then the next two weeks are going to be question and answer periods with the four remaining projects and the developers with them before we send the second round out. And be happy to ask and answer any questions. We do have a proposed motion before you, so if you have questions, Jim and I are here to help you out.
Any questions by any of the Commissioners? Had a hard-working group there, Charlie. Want to congratulate the people who've worked hard on this.
Thank you.
Do you have a motion to move forward the four, the four different site, or excuse me, applications, which would be Muchler Bartram, site Bruhala, Enclave, Shields Arena, RLD, Fargo Dome, and EAPAC, Civic Downtown and Downtown site? Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Just so the public knows, you go through some things now, and it'll come back eventually to the developers. We'll bring back second site or second round of questions, and then your Committee will make a selection.
We'll bring back the scoring criteria for the second round and have you approve that before it goes out to the developers.
Yeah. Commissioner Kolpak?
I just want to concur with Charlie's comments about the rest of the Committee non-Commission members. I've learned so much from all of you who are in the industry. Every single one of you has contributed a question at the appropriate time, given your expertise, and it has really made a difference. The last thing I'll say is, we spent an entire two meetings on the formula for the ranking and the judging and how, I mean, it was diligence to the 10th degree, but I think in the end, you're seeing a really good product as a result, so I just really want to thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Pepcorn, you have your light on or don't?
Just real quick, obviously, we do have an excellent Committee, but the next phase is the critical phase because it's the financial modeling, and to me, the critical thing is it has to be financially successful and not be a burden on the taxpayers. And so, to me, the location, that's not that important. The most important thing is that it's at least break even and hopefully makes money, and so that is going to be a critical thing. And I do, I will say, so the scoring, I didn't agree with all the scores, and it's kind of cool because if the public wants to see how we scored, you can see it, and so I like that. But the Committee, that was our top four, and there was kind of a break. And so, if you're on a Committee and everybody votes, then that's the way you go. And so, Charlie's our leader, and he said, that's what we're doing, so by God, that's what we're doing. So, anyway, and it is an excellent mix of people, lots of good questions, and so we've learned a lot that will make the project a better project no matter which one we select. The last thing I'll say is, the worst part was, each one of those projects had something that I would have liked to have kept. Of all nine, there was something in each one, whether it's an architect, or the hotel, or the, that was the hardest part because they all had something that was very appealing, and so that was, to me, the toughest part of it, so.
Wasn't it wonderful, though, to get nine viable projects? That's, I think, even I was a little surprised that we got a total of nine of really good projects, so we appreciate everyone's interest in this, and it gives me heart that they think this is something that can happen.
Roll call vote, please.
Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner?
I'm just curious if we're at, is there any intention to engage the public significantly so we can find out what the people want? I know I hear anecdotally what people think they want, but is there any formal approach to go to the people and say, hey, give us your thoughts?
We've had some discussion about that. We haven't landed on a good process for that at this point, but once we get into the second round, I'm sure that will come up again, and we'll see if there's some way for us to do that. It's, you know, the process is in motion, so we certainly are willing to take feedback from anybody at any time, and we do receive that via email and other communications. We haven't come up with a particular way to have an open session or anything yet, so we'll discuss that as we get into the second round.
Thank you. I would suggest, Charlie, the public can contact Commissioners anytime to give their preference, and I've gotten a couple of emails, just traffic issues or different issues. So, I would encourage the public, if they want to get involved with four site selections, if they feel one is better than the other, reach out to us and please send a communication to us.
And I would add too, that, and I think the Commissioners being on the Committee has made this absolutely mandatory, but we always intended this to be fully transparent. Every meeting is on television. You can go back and look at every single meeting if there's anything you want to know about it, and we, like Commissioner Pepcorn said, we've even posted the individual scoring. You can see how each committee member scored all of the proposals. So if anybody has questions, they certainly can reach out to us. I think we're all pretty well-known in the community.
Mr. Pepcorn.
So if the public's interested, our meetings are open too. It's at 1:00 on Fridays, and you're willing to come. Everybody is here in person, most people are. And so if you want to have something that you want to say, we're there. And so I would encourage people to, and if you want to see how we came to those votes, all that information is, you can go back and look at it all online. So, but we welcome participation without a doubt.
Yeah. But we'll discuss that a little bit more, Commissioner Strand, as we go forward, and see if there's some way we can get further input. But again, we're always available for that.
Very good. Roll call vote, please.
Colpak?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Turnberg?
Aye.
Mahoney? Aye. Forty-five, construction update. Tom, I'll explain. Oh, I'm sorry, Series F. I got to explain. Thanks for being reluctant to get up. Okay. So we're coming to a Series F, which is a part of our approval for interim financing. Fargo's local cost share for the Red River Valley water supply by any plan. Red River Valley Water Supply Project will deliver treated water from the Zuri River Basin to the central and eastern parts of the state. The project will provide supplemental and emergency water supplies to the Red River Valley, especially during droughts when local surface water and groundwater sources do not suffice. This is the next phase of Fargo's ongoing collaboration with federal, state, and local partners to ensure water supply for eastern North Dakota. This concept has been discussed for decades. The current project has been in development for over 10 years, including five previous financial agreements totaling over $600 million, which Fargo's share being approximately $120 million. We have approved all the previous interim financing agreements, A through E, for biannual work plans of similar terms. Series F is a continuation of the previous financial agreements which have been approved by the Commission. The interim finance agreement plans F is associated with the 2025-2027 State Biannual Work Plan for Red River Valley Water Supply. The 2025 State Biannual Work Plan is 273.33 million, which 75% is the state at 205 and 25% is the local at 68.33. This is one of the largest, if not the largest, single appropriation in legislative history, demonstrating the priority of this project as shown to the entire state. Now, interestingly, the local share is being financed by the Garrison Diversion through an infrastructure loan with the Bank of North Dakota at 40 years for 2% and shaped debt for the first two years deferred and the next three years interest only. It's the only time in Bank of North Dakota history these types of terms have been offered. The terms were necessary to allow water systems to grow their rates over time. Remember that Fargo's share of 25% includes the city of West Fargo and Casserole Water District. Fargo, West Fargo, and Casserole paying $1,000 per gallon for their nominated water, Fargo's share, including West Fargo and Casserole, of the cost for the projects have been included in the water utilities financial model and projected water rates. We feel this has continued to be a great way in which we've figured out the debt and how we can manage the debt so it's not a burden on our taxpayers. And Ian, you want to go on to more things or?
Yeah, we just have one modification to the agreement compared to what was in your agenda packet, which is recital number seven. It's a slight modification. It was made in conjunction with the Department of Water Resources. The modified recital's on the board saying, "All parties recognize valid Thompson-Acker water rights held by Grand Forks, Fargo, West Fargo, Valley City, and Lisbon. Agreements or modifications, any related to these Thompson-Acker water rights will be negotiated, executed solely and exclusively with the North Dakota Department of Water Resources and the list of right holders above." In Thompson-Acker water rights, what that is, is it's our right to have stored water at Lake Ash, Ashtabula. So those five cities have the property right in that water. And what we're saying here is if there's any modifications to those rights, those will only be agreed upon between the five cities and the Department of Water Resources. So this is a non-substantive change, but we pointed out because it is a change to what was in your agenda packet. So with that, we're happy to answer any questions, but the suggested motion is on the board.
And Dan, you want to add anything?
No, no, it took a lot of negotiations to get here with the Series F agreements and stuff. So it's a big project, and you know, with the state funding that they appropriated so much, you know, it's good to be a part of the big project, so.
And we're hoping there may be some federal money that's coming as well. We're working on that, and we may get some of that to help decrease the rates that eventually the consumer has to pay. I have a suggested motion. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Pepcorn?
I'm sorry.
Second.
Second.
And I have some questions, if you don't mind. So obviously, this is, it's a great project, but the amount of debt, so can you talk a little bit? So obviously, we're getting a preferred interest rate, but does this affect, I mean, this is still going on, this is our debt, even though it's, and it's a lot of money. So I just, where does this show up on our balance sheet?
So we are obligated to repay this debt, but technically, the debt is in the name of Garrison Diversion, so it actually will not affect our bond rating. But with that said, we are obligated to repay this debt, but it will not affect our bond rating with the way it's currently orchestrated.
And obviously, it's, the interest rate is incredibly low, so that's beneficial, but it's still, so technically, it's, how does it show up, though? Like when we're looking at our, at our overall debt, where does it show up? Or doesn't it show up at all?
I don't think it shows up at all. It will not show up on our debt rating. It doesn't show up.
That concerns me because this is still our debt. And even though we have a great interest rate and it's a great project, this is a lot of money, and it's still our debt. Do you get what I'm saying?
It's actually in utility rates, Dan has that rated out there. We have money that we have over time. We know that we're going to have to pay. So when he's looking at his debt load or what he has to do in utility rates, that is projected in that as well.
Yeah, right now, Commissioner, the financial model for the water utility does include the entire project projected into our water rates. But as far as, I think on our balance sheets, it might not be on there, but we do project the shaped debt, the 2% over the 40 years.
What it doesn't affect, it doesn't affect Moody's rating because it's not seen there as obligated debt?
That's what I believe, yeah.
But you get what I'm saying, Mr. Chair?
No, absolutely, but they have to have it in utility, otherwise it would.
And I totally get this, but the other thing that, I mean, in Fargo, we're very fortunate. We have an excellent water department. There's a lot of small cities that are eligible to be on this project that aren't because they can't afford, can't afford to participate. And so if there was some way, and this is above our pay grade as a city of Fargo, but I wish the state would have some type of scholarship program because for a lot of small towns, this would be a huge benefit 20, 50, 100 years from now. And so, anyway, that's what I'm, I don't know if you agree with that, Mr. Chair, but it's, it's.
Well, no, but we've had a good sign up, yeah, and we've had a good sign up of our users throughout the state because of that shaped debt, Bank of North Dakota, and what it's doing. So our participation has been excellent as far as people have signed up. But you're right, it's nice if the state can continue to help out. And if we get some federal money, we think that'll help the small users as well.
So, and I guess that's what, if possible, I would encourage us to do that. And I don't, obviously, we're limited as to what we can do, but whatever we can do to help, because for a lot of small towns, if you only have 200 customers, you can't afford to participate in this. But down the road, this would be really their lifeline for economic development especially. And so, all right, I apologize, but it's something that's kind of out of our area, but it does apply to us. So, all right. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Colpak.
Yeah, I was just going to reinforce the importance of the relationships with the state on this project, both the Bank of North Dakota, but also our legislature. This was the largest awarded at 205 million project for support. Understanding, to your point, Commissioner Pepcorn, the impact economically in the eastern part of the state. And so just kudos to that working relationship all the way around.
We want to thank legislative team as well because it was down to 150, and they went up to 205, so we're very pleased with the work of them. Mr. Strand?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, we're so far into the weeds talking about detail that it's easy to overlook how many decades this has been coming. My entire life, we've been anticipating that water would come from western North Dakota to the eastern part of the state. It was promised decades ago. So this, with water, with resilience and protecting ourselves from flooding and protecting ourselves from droughts, we're really positioned in a really major way for a future that's solid. But this is gargantuan in that picture of getting this accomplished after generations of work.
Thank you, Tom. Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Colpak?
Aye.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Strand?
Yes.
Turnberg?
Aye.
Mahoney?
Aye.
Tom, are you now ready to do a construction update?
Well, good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Happy to provide another update of engineering-led projects within the city of Fargo. Always like to lead off with this slide. There have not been any injuries or accidents on any city of Fargo project since the last time I reported to you. Best place I'd like to steer people is to FargoStreets.com. We have links on there to current projects, future projects, and then an interactive map of street closures and detours. Kick off the update with the update on the Gateway Fiber buildout. You can see there's a lot of work that's been done in the last two months as part of that fiber buildout. So everything in green is fully installed, completed, restoration complete. You can see some green dots. There are some restoration or cleanup items that we're tracking in some of those locations, number of proposed routes, number of active builds, and then a couple of concerns and complaints that we're also tracking. So we've created this internally, this GIS tool that's been great for tracking all these issues and the progress of the project. If residents do have any concerns with anything happening in their neighborhood with the buildout, we encourage them to either email us at this email address listed or give us a call and leave a voicemail at the phone number listed. Lot of various projects going on throughout the city. I'm not going to go through the list here, but we do still have a few core neighborhood projects that are going, and hopefully, those will be wrapping up here in the next couple of weeks. To highlight some of the ongoing projects and the new developments, so Selkirk Third Edition Phase One is complete and home construction has started there. That's the west half of that project. And the contractors continuing to install underground utilities and work on roadway construction on the east part of that project. Up north in Dakota Commerce Center Phase Two, contractors working on the installation of underground utilities and working on earthwork for the roadways. Here you can see working east to west on 52nd Avenue North, just south of the lagoons. And they were installing storms that were here in this photo. The Southwest Metro Pond continues to progress. The contractor did complete the installation of the box culverts under 45th Street, and that's what you see in this image here. There are two box culverts crossing under 45th Street, south of 64th Avenue. The one on the right-hand side of the picture is the pedestrian crossing for a grade-separated pedestrian crossing. And the one on the left side of the picture is the waterway. Looking further west, you can see in that image the secondary pond that's part of that system. And overall, the contractor has excavated about 60% of the overall clay that they have to move for this project. You can see here at the larger north pond, you know, the first phase that was dug a couple of years ago, and then how the contour shape is showing up here on the expanded part of that pond. 32nd Avenue between 15th Street and 22nd Street is complete and open to the public. I should have said, moving into completed projects, no longer ongoing projects. Just want to highlight a few of our core neighborhood reconstruction projects. This is what Sixth Street South looked like prior to a reconstruction. You can see pavement was in pretty rough condition. You know, what you don't see in these images are all the work that was done below grade two. Most of these core neighborhood projects had underground utilities that were in excess of 100 years old, and they were certainly showing their age. So a huge improvement that you don't see in these projects are those updates to that underground infrastructure. Likewise, another core neighborhood project that's completed, this one is up in the Longfellow Neighborhood on Hickory Street. And so you can see the Google Street View image prior to reconstruction and again after This one is in downtown on 8th Street between NP and 1st Avenue. Again, you can see the pavement was quite shot here. And again, we had a number of underground utility issues here, and you can see we've been able to improve those. Also want to highlight a shared use path repair that we did. This is just east of, northeast of City Hall here along the Red River. The existing concrete path in this area had settled quite a bit and created some issues. You can see there is a large grade issue there, and that was recently repaired, back to ADA standards. Number of other completed projects, again, not going to go through detail in these. Most of these I've highlighted at previous commission meetings, but as you can see, the list continues to grow as we are getting towards the end of our construction season. With that, happy to answer any questions. And otherwise, hopefully, in a month, I'll be back to provide another update, and we'll be pretty well wrapped up at that point.
Any questions of Tom? Thank you, Tom. Appreciate it. Just before I lay down, I think we'll just get our other business done with Chris Rose. Recommendation to approve the agreement for property demolition with Western activation property located 1102 First Avenue South. Chris Rose to explain.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm here to ask you for your signatures for a contract that was previously approved on September 29th for Western excavation to move forward with the demolition at 1102 First Avenue South. So tonight, we just need approval through your signatures.
Were you showing any slides or no?
No.
Oh, okay. Any questions at the commission? Do I have a motion? I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments, questions? Roll call vote, please.
Pepcorn?
Aye.
Turnberg?
Aye.
Colpak?
Aye.
Strand?
Mahoney?
Aye.
Thank you.
Please, on reports, Christopher Strand.
Thank you, Mayor. Today is Indigenous Peoples' Day, and the Mayor and I joined our leadership and community at the Indigenous Association this morning for a community breakfast, which is just really good attendance and a good event. They named, I hope I got the first name right, Cindy Galley was named the Gladys Ray Award recipient for this year. And she's from the Wahala area originally and is a lifelong advocate for native issues in the community. When you meet her and if you ever hear her speech, you go, there's a lot we can learn culturally from people like that, especially when they're in our community. It was really something. Fargo was the 12th city in the country to name Indigenous Peoples' Day as opposed to Columbus Day. And in that, in that culture, that's a really big accomplishment when the natives felt like, and not felt like, they experienced genocide after Columbus landed here, essentially. And so we're at the forefront of that movement, that messaging. And we have a row of five tribes in our community. There's events all day long today across the river as well. Let's just remind ourselves always that we're on native lands first and foremost. They were here long before us, and we need to always honor them and learn from those cultures that preceded us and are still with us.
Thank you, John. Commissioner Colpak?
Yes, I have two updates, fun updates. The first is about the water tower. You may have seen this story in the forum. Dan was interviewed. But the downtown water tower is competing in the National Tank of the Year Contest, which features tanks from across the U.S. and Canada. There's quite a few there you will see if you go to vote. And at 2.5 million gallons, it's Fargo's new water tower is the largest in North Dakota. And as a reminder, the Arts and Culture Commission worked with the city on the mural on the tower, and it tells the story of place, the winding Red River of the North, the city's skyline, popular outdoor activities, and local symbols were woven together into one bold, colorful landmark. The Tank of the Year Contest, determined by your votes at bit.ly backslash vote for Fargo. It's also on the city website and our social channels. So I hope you take a look at that. I think we're no longer, we were in first, second, then third, and now we're out of third place, so we need your votes. And then tonight, I just want to answer a question that did come up when a resident was reviewing the agenda for the last city commission meeting, and I thought I'd share it with everyone. It's a question I asked early on as a Commissioner. But on every agenda, the last item typically on the consent agenda is an item called bills. And there's nothing in the agenda packet that's associated with that. And this is the reason. And this is the reason. It's a standing item every two weeks that is basically the commission giving permission for city staff to pay the city's ongoing bills as approved in the annual budget. And then, all final bills are then posted with the meeting minutes after the meeting in the forum public notice section. So, just a little insight there, and that's my report.
Thank you. That Bills question is a good question. I have no report this time. Commissioner Turnberg?
Tom just did a big report for me, so no report here.
Commissioner Pepcorn? Okay. So then, we're going to go public comments. In person, I have Izzy Wright. Izzy Wright?
I'm invoking Marcy's law against Michelle Turnberg, and I need to potentially file a formal complaint and press charges against her on my behalf.
Say, we can bring up commissioners, Dan, if you want. If you want to do something different, you may do that, but if you want to speak to an issue?
Well, under North Dakota Sentry Code 44040, or 21.1, may prohibit if an alternative procedure exists to bring that particular type of public comment before the public entity. The public comment includes confidential or exempt information, and the public comment is otherwise prohibited by law. I have confidential information here, and I need to file a complaint against Michelle Turnberg.
Nancy, you want to comment to this, please?
And I need.
No, I mean, do you take the confidential information? Who do we want in public?
Well, I need to file a complaint against a police chief, too, and several officers.
Okay, well, where would he file?
It would be the Attorney General. I already know this.
Well, then, why are you coming here?
Because you guys are ridiculous. You're authority figure. You guys don't do your jobs properly.
We do our job.
No. I have an affidavit of a police lying. I am evidence of the police lie. I respect cops, only good ones that don't lie.
Again, we have a complaint process you can follow, and you can follow that complaint process.
Well, I.
Next speaker would be virtual? No, you're done speaking. There's nothing that you can speak to. You're obliged to do your complaint through the normal process that we would do. There's no further discussion. We'll go to our virtual speaker. We're going to go to our next speaker. Virtual, I have Olivia Fisher. Olivia, are you ready?
Yes.
Olivia, are you on? Brian, do we have a virtual or not? That's the end of our speakers. We will adjourn. We'll return.